Page twenty-three. Page twenty-four. Twenty-five. Twenty-six. Twenty-seven. Twenty-eight. Sorry, I see page twenty-eight is omitted. Twenty-one. Secretariat, take note. Page twenty-one, page twenty-eight are missing. You need to renumber the whole document. Page twenty-nine. Thirty. Thirty-one. Thirty-two. Thirty-three. Thirty-four. Thirty-five. Thirty-six. Thirty-seven. Page thirty-eight. Page thirty-nine. Page forty. Page forty-one. Yes, please? Let's have your name and then go ahead. Microphone.
Thank you. My name is John Ochibo, Director of River Basin. Point one, point eight, point four.
Yes?
Line five.
Yes?
Starting from line four, where it says pioneered, that is, the National Water Resources Institute.
Yes.
Pioneered the celebration of the Meding Day in Nigeria. I think the correct thing should have been that it pioneered the celebration of the World Rivers Day in Kaduna.
Okay, are we agreed with that? It's not Meding Day.
It's not Meding Day, it's World Rivers Day.
World Rivers Day.
And in Kaduna.
In Kaduna. Secretariat, take note. Thank you very much, Director. Any other amendments for that page? Page forty-two. Page forty-three. Forty-four. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine. Fifty. Fifty-one. Fifty-two. Fifty-three. Fifty-four. Fifty-five. Fifty-six. Fifty-seven. Fifty-eight. Fifty-nine. Sixty. Sixty-one. Sixty-two. Sixty-three. Sixty-four. Sixty-five. Sixty-six. Sixty-seven. Sixty-eight. Yes, please?
The Director of Arbitration, representing the Permanent Secretary. Ministry of Water Resources, Skalava. Page sixty-four.
Sixty-four?
Yes, seven point one. Where you have the sub-two. Sustainable Water Resource Management. The spelling of the management there was wrong.
Okay. Thank you very much, and A is missing, Secretariat, take note. Thank you. So, page sixty-seven. Sixty-eight. Sixty-nine. Seventy. Seventy-one. Seventy-two. Seventy-three. Seventy-four. Seventy-five. Seventy-six. Seventy-seven. Seventy-eight. Seventy-nine. Page eighty. Eighty-one. Eighty-two. Eighty-three. Eighty-four. Eighty-five. Eighty-six. Eighty-seven. Eighty-eight. Eighty-nine. Ninety. Page ninety-one. Ninety-two. Page ninety-three. Page ninety-four. Page ninety-five. Page ninety-six. Ninety-seven. Ninety-eight. Ninety-nine. One hundred. Wow, Secretariat, you did a good job. Hundred and one, no, don't clap yet, we are not through. Page hundred and one. One hundred and two. One hundred and three. One hundred and four. One hundred and five. One hundred and six. One hundred and seven. One hundred and eight. One hundred and nine. One hundred and ten. Page one hundred and eleven. One hundred and twelve. One hundred and thirteen. One hundred and fourteen. One hundred and fifteen. Page one hundred and sixteen. Page one hundred and seventeen. I think I need to take a deep breath. So now we come to the attendance. Please check carefully that your name is rightly spelt, that your designation is correct, that your organization is right. But I would like to crave your indulgence to say as you go through and check that everything about your details are correct, perchance there's anything wrong. Can we please just pass it on to the Secretariat so that we can take this as having been done? Because it's quite a lot. Can we do that rather than calling the pages one at a time? Since it is just the attendance, please can we take note of any amendments and pass it on? Okay? Okay, thank you very much. So, right now, would like for someone to move for adoption of the minutes as amended. The floor is open. Yes, please, what state is this? Anambra, yes. Microphone?
My name is Kechukwonya Dibe from the Ministry of Public Utilities and Water Resources, Okanambra State. I stand to move for the adoption of minutes of twenty-seventh National Council on Water Resources.
Okay, thank you, I just want to clarify, were you here in that meeting?
Yes, I was here.
Okay, thank you very much. Can someone please second that motion? As amended, yes, as amended. Thank you, yes, what state is this? Delta, thank you.
My name is Engineer Doctor Okonu Sahoro. I stand to support the motion to adopt these minutes, thank you.
As amended, thank you very much. Thank you, so the minutes are adopted. We can give ourselves a round of applause. So, the next item is discussion on the matters arising from the twenty-seventh meeting of the National Technical Committee on Water Resources. I'd like to, at this point, invite my indefatigable Director, Water Resources Planning and Technical Support Services, to please help me to take that item. I think what we'll do is we'll take the, um... We'll take the matter arising and then the action that has been taken.
Thank you very much, my Permanent Secretary, for giving me the floor. Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to take the matters arising from the twenty-seventh National Regular National Council on Water Resources, and we take them one by one. We take the item, then the action will be discussed by the relevant departments or agency that what how far they have gone with the level of the implementation. I will give the mic to one of my supporter, my collaborator, and the master of ceremony to help me guide us in the matters arising from the last session. Thank you, ma'am, would you have permission, please?
Action Memo One. Memorandum on the Need for Capacity Building of Staff Managing Ballhole Projects in the various local governments of the country on ballhole constructions, operations, maintenance, and management. Issues for action. Need for council to urge states and local government to collaborate with National Water Resources Institute to train staff in the various local government areas on ballhole construction, operation, maintenance, and management. This is supposed to be handled by the National Water Resources Institute, states, and the federal capital territory. These are the ones to report on the progress.
So, what we'll do is, once the matter arising is read out, the person to report should please come quickly. Do we have a podium? Can we have a podium here, please? Where's the podium of this morning? Quickly, quickly, please bring the podium here so the person can come out, use the podium and report. Quickly, please. So, will the representative of the institute please come forward quickly?
The Permanent Secretary. Regarding the progress on the capacity building on ballhole construction, design, management, some of the states, yeah, some of the state actually responded, but we do know that there is still room for improvement in terms of the sending staff to the National Water Resources Institute. Covid actually affected, but I would believe that with time, most states will actually respond, including the local government. Thank you very much.
Um, institute, what we expect you to tell us is what have you done to ensure that the memo and the resolution are actualized? What have you done? Because that was something for you to do something about, what have you done?
Yeah, we placed advertisement in our normal courses, there was an extra mic to sensitize most of the various agencies, ministry departments that are involved in this, including RWASS, on the availability of these courses and the need for them to key into this program. So I'm only reporting the result of what we have done in terms of sensitizing them and also ensuring that they come for the course. Some of they did respond there and of course with carried out the trainings, but what I'm saying is that there's still more room for them to key, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, any questions for him? Any feedback from the states or the local governments? There's a hand, yes, please? Microphone to him, please, quickly. We need more microphones, Secretariat. Please, we need at least two more microphones. Please.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, it's not directly on its response. I was just wondering, my name is Bola Jisule from University of Illinois. I was just wondering, ma'am, whether what we should be taking now is the decision of council on each memo? It was to be presented to council, whether council approved it or not, rather than taking what they have done about it. Thank you.
Okay, let me understand you better. Please, can you clarify?
I was saying that this is the record of what happened at the National Technical Committee meeting last year. And all these memo we are to go to the National Water Resources Council. I was wondering whether we wanted to know whether they were approved or not here for them to act on them. I'm not sure whether that's what we are doing now.
Well, what we are doing now is that we are looking at the memos that council approved, and we are trying to find out, so since then, whoever was to take action, what have you done? Where, what is the status of the action memos that were approved? So that we are not doing things in futility. Am I correct? So that is what we are doing, sir. Is that okay? Yes. Yes. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, so we'll take the next matter arising.
Action Memo Number Two. Memorandum on the Establishment of a Specialized University of Water Resources in Nigeria. Issues for action. Need to set up a technical committee to interface with the National Universities Commission, NUC, in order to explore the possibility of establishing a specialized university of water resources, National Water Research Institute to provide update.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, we were we were either mandated or instructed to start this process. And we have started, but the technical committee that was proposed here normally will come from NUC. But before then, the process must start. So it's for us to write to the NUC through the ministry and then see what NUC requires of us to do. It's after that we'll set up a committee that will look at those things that are required for the establishment of the university. We have gone beyond that, we made a proposal which was sent to NUC, NUC is working on it now. And by the NUC also to provide certain information, there's a checklist we have sent, and we started working on this. But as it is, we need an academic brief, a memo to the council, allows also a bill, Assembly. We started on both. If we're lucky, either the National Assembly will be faster than the executive, but we are told to approach from both ends, which we have started. Us, the bill and the memos are being processed well, being designed now. As soon as we have much the ministry know, because as it is, it is moving on fine. But after we come, we're instructed that we cannot constitute it that way. So, but the one the ministry is supposed to do has been done.
Thank you very much. So we've heard him, any comments? Questions? Are we okay? So we move on to the next one, number three.
Action Memo Number Three. Memorandum on the Status of Groundwater Monitoring Network in Nigeria. NISA to hold meeting with Abia and Lagos State to resolve pending issues on monitoring boreholes in their custody. Ensure that the data logger installed in NISA monitoring boreholes located in the premises of the Cross River Basin Development Authority, which was subsequently removed by unknown persons, be made, be replaced, be made to be replaced by the authority. The need for memorandum of understanding to be signed between NISA and benefiting state so that the responsibilities can be shared with regards to construction, operation, and monitoring boreholes. The action is to be taken, the first one is to be taken by NISA, Lagos, and Abia States. The second one by NISA and the Cross River Basin Development Authority. The third action is to be handled by NISA.
Okay, so quickly, NISA, Lagos, and...
Uh, the action taken so far.
Sorry, NISA, you have two minutes, make a brief.
Lagos State government has already awarded a contract to replace, to replace the the damaged monitoring borehole. Also, we will not be able to get in touch with Abia States, I've called the commissioners, I've called the SSG. They will not be able to respond to us, our staff who were two weeks ago, they didn't have access to the facility for the Cross River, uh, Cross River Basin Development Authority, where amongst other things, they lost a lot during the NSA's protest. They will not be able to replace the vandalized or stolen monitoring well within their premises. We have prepared memorandum of understanding with these, um, states where we have monitoring wells. And most importantly, before ever we install any monitoring well, we normally hold stakeholders meeting in the state, like about two weeks ago, we had one with Cross River State Government, where we have, uh, established another monitoring well in Cross River State. I think that is the situation for now with regard to the monitoring boreholes we have in these states.
Okay, thank you very much, I don't know if Abia State is here and Lagos State, Lagos is here? Okay, Abia is not here. Lagos, please, would you want to come up to say something? Thank you.
Good afternoon, madam.
Good afternoon.
Our protocols duly observed, ma'am. Uh, as reported by NISA, ma'am, the destroyed borehole has been awarded and the progress of work so far is about ninety percent completed by the contractor. And so we will solicit for the meeting with the NISA after this conference. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Lagos State. Cross River Basin Development Authority. Are they here? Are they here? No, okay. So any comments on the report on this item? We are okay, isn't it? Something is being done, thank you very much, NISA. So we move on to the next one. Number four.
Memorandum on Flood Mitigation and Management in Nigeria. Issues for action, encourage states to actively participate in annual flood sensitization program organized by NISA. The need for states to hit to NISA's annual flood outlook prediction warnings and put in place measures towards mitigation rather than management. The need for states to enforce town and building codes regarding setbacks on rivers to enforce proper flood mitigation and management. Encourage NISA to partner with states and other agencies in the acquisition of flood early warning systems. For the first two items, NISA is to report progress. Number three, NISA had that the six states and FCT to report progress. And the fourth item, NISA is to report progress.
Yes, NISA.
The agency has continued to encourage the states to be part and part sole of our annual flood outlook presentations. So much effort are put in place to bring in the states. It is of such importance to the agency and indeed the honorable, the Minister of Water Resources. The Honorable Minister usually takes uh, necessary steps to ensure that he gets access or reach the governance of each of the states, endorsing letters to them, informing them of what they are likely to expect in the course of every year. Have been doing that. Last year, we had a public presentation by the Honorable Minister. Several states were in attendance, some were there by Zoom. So, so much is being done in terms of involving the states, but the next, the missing link seems to be what they have done with the information given to them early enough. They're only reading the details. NISA had been taking necessary steps to inform the states and also continues on advocacy, enlightenment to every state to let them know their responsibilities.
Thank you very much, NISA. So I'd like to ask, is there any state here who would like to give a feedback or to make a comment on NISA's report? States? No one? I see a hand, microphone?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm not from the states.
Okay.
But I want to reinforce the brief by NISA. In all honesty, those of whom that are the early warning agencies are not getting the cooperation that we require from the state governments. Just like NISA, the Nigerian Meteorological Agency also issues its annual seasonal rainfall prediction, which is the first annual system to the entire country of what is likely to happen with the climate or weather. But the state government unfortunately not okay. And I am speaking now as a board member of NISA, and I know the efforts both NISA and the Honorable Minister are making to get the state's partner with NISA on the installation of this annual rainfall prediction. Unfortunately, the states are not okay, I don't know what the government will do or what commitment they are going to do with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Naimet. Um, I see a hand from one of the states, let's hear from the states. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Ametan, I'm from Nasseraw City. Uh, I'm quite aware from Nasseraw City, I think the report from NISA for the incident that occurred is in the city that the city agency in the area was able to set up a committee and then collaborate with the program and cooperate with the government to the point that everyone in the city, in downstream or riverbed in U, uh, in Umashe, have to by inferencing that every shot dispatched calls Abias and Chiefs and then those people. This will be the need for sanitation and then clearly. However, uh, we as a state, from the, from the, from the rivers that is posted, uh, the river, thereby relating data and then for the water basis. So we endorse that NISA should have more collaboration and then we would give more collaboration with because we see we have a little more water, which is essential for water quality. We will have one discussing with the city. So so kind of because of the more collaboration with NISA and we want to adjust this, but there are certain factors almost a year that was done and we go to source and have not data, allowing data within the script to the water project. So we don't actually have no, no, uh, issue with that, uh, to regular water. And then we don't that the water projects should be elevated, which is good to align. And to prevent, to meet trouble.
Thank you very much. That's a positive report from a state. Would like to hear from at least one more state. One more state. Anyone?
Hello?
Let's take someone from the state, please. Microphone.
Thank you, um, probably the state. Um, NISA normally sends in the annual, uh, uh, outlook plot each year to the states. And once we receive it, we normally communicate the local governments that are drawn to plot. And we go down the years, actions are normally taken, particularly as not outlook, not to state. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm surprised that the states from the southwest and the south-south, you have nothing to tell us about NISA's flood outlook. Can we have from a state that has suffered flood in recent times? Is that Lagos state? Okay, Lagos state, please.
My protocol duly observed, ma. Uh, in Lagos state, uh, each year as we receive the annual flood outlook and also we receive the Nymet report. The Honorable Commissioner for the Parliament on Water Resources usually make the public announcement and we sensitize people that lives along water river line area, most especially the river area in Lagos state. And that has always been our early warning system. Along that, uh, along that river, we have, uh, river gate, we have, uh, automatic river readings and all that in our office and we usually take care, take notice of it. And anytime we have it, we, the Honorable Commissioner always disseminate this information to the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very gratifying to note that the work of NISA and Nymet are being used by the states. Can we have a state from the south-south, please? Yes?
One of the step taken by the state.
Sorry, your name and your state, please.
My name is Engineer Doctor Open Saro, Delta State. A state. Uh, one of the step taken by the Delta State is ensure that those building on the, uh, water plane are that they, we apply, we ensure that don't, uh, build on the water channels. Secondly, this year in the world, according to the work from Shogun on the ninth day, we have to evacuate those living at the riverbank so that they are not affected by flood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So on this note, I'd like to thank NISA and Nymet. NISA, you have something to add?
Ten seconds.
Okay, then.
So I must commend, uh, Gagawa State. We worked very closely with them. They send top officials to our agency to get information ahead of time. Setting up committees that will take necessary steps. I also commend KB State. The governor himself is personally involved in relating with the agency. At a time, he sent two commissioners to come and meet with us in the office and also requested for assistance to come to them. So these are the two major states I can mention that are open to what we do in terms of relating with us, finding information from us. Others could be, do certain things we are not aware of, like I know of Lagos state, what the commissioner is doing also, but KB and Gagawa states to us are the closest states when it comes to responding to flood issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, DG. Thank you. Okay, we go quickly. Oh, you have a comment? Okay. Microphone.
Um, normally, I know the states mentioned here, but encouragement can be from example. Holding your own focus is an example. NISA itself, I'm aware, and I know, I'm aware, took action on encroachment on Wee River that will cause flood to our ports. And in some area around the way, some people lost their port of land that were strongly articulated. That's a good example that states can put in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. You can pass the microphone to him.
Madam Chairman, uh, I don't know whether, whether the institute could, uh, provide, uh, we saw in Awasa that the institute has started building the, the water tower. Uh, I, I think this comes in, in this particular, uh, situation. And we, the, the build in three places, I don't know where they're going for. But the government, uh, they should be given money to build the more locations. They had Macodi, they had, uh, Lokoya, and, uh, yeah, so I, I, I think this is a very good, uh, this intervention by
The institute. Okay, thank you. Yes, Prof, can you just speak to that, please? Come this way.
Thank you, uh, I wonder. Thank you very much, Chairman. Yes, we, it was, is part of our early warning system. It's a flood mark and it's graduated and then colored. When flood rises to a certain, above green, if it's in green, then the environment is still okay. If it goes to amber or yellow, it means that there's a threat. And then anybody living in that environment should be careful. Certain environments or certain places in that region, we have graduated them. And for those, for NISA, for instance, this graduation also shows lines. After the flood is gone, we now see how much sediment has accumulated during that flood. So you can mark your sedimentation process and the accumulation. So you can predict and see what is happening. So we do it and we report to NISA too. We have done in four places already. We have in Kaduna, we have Odi, we have in Lokoya and we have in Onisha. So now going to Yola and then some other areas in the south to have the flood marks. And then over the radio, we tell people, if you see this water rising to this level, be careful. So it's just a primitive way, but very effective.
Thank you very much. I'm sure the states are gathering information that they can use to their benefit. Okay, thank you. We'll move quickly to number five.
Memorandum on the need for enhanced collaboration between the three tiers of government for accessing land for irrigation, agriculture. Issues for action, state governments to further collaborate with the federal government by by facilitating access to land and take up the responsibility of cadastral survey mapping compensation to the landowners as part of their contributions to national development of the irrigation subsector. Action by Department of Irrigation and Drainage and states also to provide update.
Thank you, ma, the chairman. Uh, please, on this, uh, particular, uh, action memo that was approved by the council, we were able to communicate with the thirty-six states of the Federation. We are treating, you know, the need for us to work together in order to ensure we have unhindered access to areas that we are engaging in irrigated agriculture. And as we are here, I presume that the particular commissioner or the office handling this matter, they are already taking necessary measure. This issue is very, very important because of the challenges that we are having and we have to do it together with the state government and the local governments, federal state and local government as well as the communities. To take this matter forward on our own path, we have been able to visit some community, community leaders in some of the, uh, states in selected river basin development authorities. And it is pertinent that we take this matter serious. Otherwise, uh, some land that we already have irrigation infrastructure, uh, we may be facing issues of takeover by some families. Because already we have such issues emanating whereby a particular land or some land that have been earmarked, you know, some communities are, have come back to express interest. Meanwhile, the land have been assigned to investors or, you know, group of people to be cultivated. So in essence, where we have small, uh, where, where we have land that are not being owned by small older farmers, there is the need for the state and the local government as well as the, as the communities to collaborate with us. Otherwise, we may lose the opportunity, you know, of continuing with the irrigated agriculture in this land. Recently, about few weeks ago, a, a family wrote in that they would desire to take over the land that was already, uh, assumed to be under a particular river basin. And therefore, uh, we want the states, the local governments and the communities to collaborate with our river basin development authorities so that whi- whichever land is within their domain of operation, the states also peep into it that a family will not just rise up and they want to desire to take over the land. And the river basin are also, uh, involved in taking the necessary land deeds to have full control of the land so that nobody will trespass anymore.
Okay, thank you very much, Direct, Director Irrigation and Drainage. Thank you for that report. Would like to know if there are any comments, questions for her? Yes, please.
My name is Williams Aba. Director Water Resources, representing the Permanent Secretary, Ministry of Water Resources, Gombe State. Yes, ma. Uh, prior to this council meeting, Gombe State commander to up and agree in the acquisition and handing over of lands era to the state government, the federal or to the local government for irrigation purposes. Ma, this can be attested by smooth implementation of the dreaming, big wind project ongoing in Gombe State because our government has been up and down, up and agreeing. I think some of that, uh, our government has been able to set the term of development of that class in the partner because I, I think the government of the state and our government eh, eh, are working as a, as a best state for new business for food and everything. Ma, following this council memo, this state will have its responsibility in addressing eh, 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 the feedback and where the growth lands. So this is, uh, the state that has recognized successes with the position right to mutation, which is championed by the Ministry of Justice and other developmental partners. Ma, you may be aware that there is a program of coming which is a follow-up of the new map program where program which is waiting upon acceleration. In the recent two months, we have been up and down in our form to this level. For ask for land in, eh, for the development of, eh, video and four and downs, and we have been up and down in that responsibility. So for Gombe, this is a success story and we are leaning on the end of this council. So we are winning our successes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gombe State, for that wonderful report. We urge you to continue in that state for more successes. Adamaowa State, please. Microphone.
My name is, uh, Suleman Shabu. Representing the Permanent Secretary, Ministry of Water Resources, I stand on existing protocols. Uh, I just want to mention that, uh, we have a lingering, uh, irrigation project that is known as the Chachi irrigation project that is ongoing for the past twenty, thirty years. And the state is clamoring for the completion of this project. And I think up to now, the project has not seen the light of the day. But, uh, discussing about the issue of this and documents related to land matters, I think is very important that the department should take a proactive stage to make sure that all lands where irrigation activities are taking place are well documented. Because families will always come up to claim lands that are not put to use, especially with respect to the Chachi irrigation project and other lands. But in Adama, I believe we have other lands that, uh, if the ministry will come to our assistance, uh, we have the passing also irrigation scheme, the dwam irrigation scheme in Numan, the irrigation scheme, local irrigation scheme. I think the, the department need to diversify so as to expand their area of coverage. That way, I think it will make more impact and that the state will be willing to support a situation whereby the irrigation activities in the state will be expanded. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Adamaowa State. Indeed, the Ministry of Water Resources is working assiduously to ensure that all our irrigation programs reach out to all the relevant states and that we have the full benefits of the programs. Thank you very much. On that note, thank you, Director Irrigation, and we'll go straight to number six.
Memorandum on the need for show of empathy and call for special intervention to provide security for farmers and other actors in the country's national food security program. Issues for action, the Honorable Minister of Water Resources as a member of National Food Security Council should initiate appropriate actions in consultation with other relevant MDAs at all levels involved in national food security program to provide adequate security for farmers on these programs and other actors in the agriculture value chain. The Federal Minister of Water Resources is to report on this through the Department of Irrigation and Drainage.
Regarding the security issue, as a matter of emphasis, it has to be a collaborative effort of both the federal state, local government, as well as the communities. On this particular item, the Honorable Minister is communicating with relevant On this particular item, the Honorable Minister is communicating with relevant group, relevant groups and agencies. And to take this further, we are taking projects specifically. And we are trying to do the needful in order to ensure that either the project is being revised or is being commenced, we deploy necessary measures to enhance the security, you know, of the project. Specifically, you know, not too long, just few, less than maybe three weeks or four weeks ago, on some of the projects, precisely one in Sokoto State, the Honorable Minister did communicate with relevant security agencies at the federal level and also the state government. And we are taking the opportunity of having the local vigilante group at the communities within the beneficiary farming group to also join the team that would be working together to provide the necessary security and ensure that it's smooth, not only the development of the project to completion, also even towards ensuring that the farming communities are able to cultivate the, to operate irrigation facilities without any fear. But beyond that, we want to join, you know, the three tiers of government, the communities, to look at this issue critically and also extend this to other state irrigation and drainage projects and any other project for that matter that has to do with food security. And this is pertinent. If there is fear in the heart of our farmers, they may not be able to go freely to cultivate. And already, year twenty twenty-two is at hand. It's really, really scary that if we don't take this measure very seriously, it may end in food shortage, food insecurity. So we should not leave it only to the Ministry of Water Resources, Department of Irrigation and Drainage, but we should take this tax as the tax for each and every one of us. With you.
Water Resources to Report Progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The department has already prioritized twelve ongoing dams project for possible completion between now and twenty thirteen. And we are also in the process of awarding consultancy contracts for four new dam projects with regards to controlling this flood which we identify. And this process is ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you heard him. Any comments? Yes, please. Mike.
I think when Professor Adano was Secretary of the Special Task Force, we recommended the inclusion of Ministry of Water Resources in the main body that is supposed to control flood as made by President Jonathan then. The reason for this is simple. Nisa is doing a good job for the short term. Control and awareness of oncoming flood. But this one is for the long term, which we've seen happen in Indonesia and, say, Thailand and other big areas. So we want the long-term effect to be, we start planning right now. I'm sure Dr. Professor Adano can add to this.
Prof, you have anything to add? What's your institute doing on this?
Okay, we, as an institute, we study our rivers and try to see what the rivers can provide in terms of water yield. But we look at the country in a whole, all the drainage patterns, and see how we can control them to modify our flows. But this memo is saying that there's dams as penmanship for flooding and the projects.
Thank you very much. I see a hand.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and the Director of Dams. I just want to ask the Director of Dams that while conceiving such projects, let's know that each dam constitutes what we call a microclimate structure. And so, please, while you are conceiving these projects and giving out the consultancies, think of the changing climate due to climate change, that is, the weather variability. You can see what is happening around the world. Tornadoes that are not expected in the United States are occurring in December instead of June. This is due to climate change. So please, while giving out the consultancy for the design of these dams, consider weather variability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your observation was well taken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see another hand.
I'm engineer from Sivanos from River Basin Ministry of Water Resources Development. I think this memorandum is talking about panacea flood control. And I also had a set that had been preparation on this. So my question, I just want to ask a question. I know that River State is a flood-prone area. And if that's a consideration for this dam, a river state, for us to also handle this flooding in River State, because River State is one of the states that suffer greatly.
Okay. Okay, we'll take the second hand and then Director, you can respond.
All protocol draws up. My name is Ahmed Kana. Mine is the issue of the, to the Director of Dams and Reservoirs. The issue of flooding, I think there is a need for a paradigm shift. What we do in Nigeria is more of a curative flooding instead of preventive flooding. I will indulge the Director to collaborate with most of the states in such way that we have eight hydrological areas, which means we have three, eight drainage system. In such way that their handling at the federal level is so cumbersome. If they can come down to the states at each point where the exit of water from a particular drainage system, such they should be able to do a small coffer dam to be able to reduce the high volume of water to the main drainage system in the country. So there is a need for an advocate, some more collaboration to the state government. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. For the first question, actually, River State that topography is not supportive for construction of dams, I'm sorry to say. So there is no way we can put a dam in River State due to the nature of the soil in that area. So, but other types of flood controls might be put there. So in such, we are talking, and we continue to collaborate with other agencies who have other types of flood controls so that they can see what they can do on that particular area. But there is no way we can put a dam in River State. And for the second one, for the second question, yes, we are coming to that. I think by next year, we are planning to have a sort of conference in which we will engage, the first stage is to first engage the river basin authorities. So that we can see what they can do at their own catchment areas. Then we will go to the states at the second conference. So as to create awareness and see how we can collaborate to tackle this menace. So we have this in our programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope the two questions have been addressed. We'll take one of our elders here.
Please, at the risk of making some of you not, not to be exactly happy. Holland is below sea level. And yet, the Holland Airport was built on the graveyard of flooded area. It was a long-term solution, and it hasn't happened again. That's why the Department of Dams is trying to sensitize the federal government to take long-term solutions seriously. The committee, which formerly, Dr. Professor Adano was the secretary, had already proposed that one meter controls be done because we, in the South-South area, because we know we cannot build dams. But as the Director said, there are other, like bonds and other things where we can detain the water. That's the trick of solving floods. So let it attenuate. It is sitting down so it doesn't flow downstream to cause damage. Please remember, the long-term solution helps the short-term solutions, sometimes eliminates it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope we are all listening. You would like to add something, sir?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Madam Chairman, without mentioning what needs to be done, in the, without mentioning what needs to be done, in the river's area, that's the bams, by the riverside, this will contain the water, the river, and will stop water from inundating whatever farmland there is in those areas. We, we mentioned in our, in our presentation that a country like Hungary, for instance, they have two main, one of it is the Tisa River, which during the flood season is much below Danube. So they have a way of putting a lock at where the two rivers meet. So that during the flood season, it is locked. Then during the dry season, it is, the water flows without creating any problem. We might need to do some of this, sorry. Hello, we might need to do some of this in our river's area. But it requires systematic job to be done. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you very much. So we moved away from dams to other techniques to stop flooding. I hope the states in the South-South are taking note of this. And the Department of Dams and Reservoir Operations, that you will begin to consider what you can do for the states whose topography cannot take dams but still suffer from flooding. So you need to begin to expand your ideas and begin to look at innovative ways of dealing with flood in these states. Thank you very much for your report. And so we move on quickly to number eight. Memo on Domestication of the Celebration of the World Rivers Day. And for that, we invite the Director, River Basin Operations and Inspectorate. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm here to report on the progress made on this, on the approval by council for the domestication of World Rivers Day in Nigeria. The first thing we did was to send a memo to the Honorable Minister to approve twenty-seventh, which is Monday, that is Monday, the day after the Sunday that the UN has approved for World Rivers Day celebration in Nigeria. Because Sunday is a work-free day, and we felt that on that day, we won't have enough participation. So we got that approval from the Honorable Minister. And then the twenty-twenty-one World Rivers Day in Nigeria was successfully celebrated in the thirty-six states and the FCT with special focus on creating public awareness on the importance of rivers, river cleanup, river cleanups activities, symbolic tree planting for river restoration and protection. The highlights of the event included press conference in Abuja by the Honorable Minister of Water Resources, press statements by the Managing Directors of the twelve river basin authorities in the states, as well as by the Director General of the National Water Resources Institute in Kaduna. We also had riverside celebrations by the stakeholders and friends of the river in fifteen selected river locations across the country. The event was attended by top-level government functionaries and professionals and stakeholders across the country, including the State Commissioners of Water Resources, Environment, Education, Science and Technology, as well as Chief Executive Officers of State Water Boards, Sewage Corporations, Nigerian Institution of Water Engineers, E-Wash, the academia, the clergies, students, market women, traditional rulers, host communities, et cetera. An estimated number of about five hundred thousand people were sensitized across the country through the media, road shows. We actually directed the twelve river basin authorities to mobilize the states within their catchment areas to carry out these activities, I mean, this celebration. The next year, twenty-twenty-two, World Rivers Day promises to be, to have a wider national coverage and greater outcomes. And so we advise all MDAs to open budget lines for the World Rivers Day celebration and watch out for our secular on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I thought Director River Basin was coming to show us some clips. It's, the World Rivers Day was really very, very well celebrated. And I'd like to thank the River Basin Development Authorities because they did a very good job and fell in line with all the activities that the ministry came up with. So, any comments on that? No comments? Thank you, Director, for a good report. So we move on quickly to number nine. And this is a memo on Assessment of Water Quality in Chronic Kidney Diseases Prone Areas. I'd like to invite the Department of Water Quality Control and Sanitation, represented by its Director, to provide an update. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I'm here to report on the assessment of chronic prone areas with respect to their drinking water quality. The assessment actually was as a result of the instruction or directive from the National Assembly for us to attend to the situation in the northeast, particularly Maiduguri, because of reported increase in cancer, oh, sorry, in kidney occurrences. We, in collaboration with the institutes, we have carried out the first preliminary assessment of Maiduguri and enviro. And we have been able to submit the first report on that action. There was, actually, the preliminary assessment detected a number of heavy metals in drinking water. And then we have been requested to go back and narrow the source of these chemicals to a particular action. We are now trying to carry out the second assessment to involve the areas that are prone or that have been reported for kidney, increase in kidney occurrences in Maiduguri. We are equally involving the We are equally involving the medical part in the assessment to ensure that those that the issues have been detected in their blood, we equally link them to the areas where they stay to ensure if it is a geological issue around the area they stay or they have other sources of getting the heavy metals into their water. So we, right now, we have just submitted the first preliminary report and we have been requested to go for the second assessment. As soon as that is concluded, we may be able to narrow down the occurrences of kidney issues in the Maiduguri and Envaro. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director. Comments, please. Don't go yet, please. Comments, yes?
Good afternoon once again. I'm Amin Muhammad Chima, the Director of Planets, Search and Statistics, Bono Settlements, Water Resources. In fact, I was part of the team that went to collect samples within Maiduguri and Envaro. But up to this moment, we are not able to get a report of what was transpiring in the research. And people have been coming to us complaining that this and this are the result of kidney failure in the state. But we told them that actually, a committee was sent by the Philharmonic of Water Resources. I was part of them. We took samples of water from various bowels. So since the sample was taken, we didn't get any feedback from them. But I'm him that submitted a report. This report, to whom was
Thank you very much. Director, you respond.
Okay, maybe it was an omission that you are not giving that preliminary report. But since a decision have been taken for the to go back to a particular source or area within Maiduguri, that is why we have not concluded the assignment. As soon as that is done, you'll be contacted, please.
Okay, thank you. Yes. The first hand and then the second hand and then he'll respond.
My name is Ahmed Kana, FNH. In the course of your presentation, we are trying to relate to the kidney problem to geology, that's geology. I don't know whether the samples taken was it inside Maiduguri Town or southern Burnu. Because as a geologist, we know that Maiduguri Town is sedimentary. And I'm not sure with the sediments within the chart one, chart two, chart three, you are going to have a geogenic problem. I would want to know where the samples were taken, vis a vis to relate it possibly from anthropogenic activity in terms of land use. Thank you very much.
Can I quickly react to that? As of now, we are now saying it is geological. We are still open and we want to be sure of the source before we make a claim. So we are not say, I have not said it is geological. I said it could be geological.
Good afternoon, all. Kaffir Enok Musa is the name, and Director of Quality Control and Sanitation, Ministry of Water Resources, Darawas State. The Director mentioned metals. Heavy metals is so broad. We have a lot of them. And these heavy metals have been detected. We want to know whether they have relationship with kidney diseases. We want to know that. And the names of these heavy metals.
Yes, thank you, madam. I want to ask the point at which the, that is the period at which these samples were taken that could be due to runoff? Could be geological. These heavy metals are washed from the surface. Who take the samples? That is basically the
The other hand, then he'll answer the three questions. Thank you.
Alex Lutha is my name, Director of Quality Assurance, Plato State Water Board. I am wondering that in Plato, it's a mining settlement. We have a lot of tin and other products right underneath on earth. I am wondering whether you have bothered to think of coming down to Plato to also take sample and see whether this chronic diseases is susceptible to people of Plato. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. As I said earlier, the visit to Maiduguri was based on discussion at the National Assembly. It was specific instruction given to the ministry to visit Maiduguri and examine the situation with respect to kidney occurrences. Where, when they are, I think during the dry season, possibly around February to March, April, the assessment, the water quality samples were taken and then analyzed and we had a report. The main heavy metal detected was cadmium and barium, which could equally be a fatal. But we are not narrowing down, as I've said, to these chemicals alone. We have been asked to carry out more detailed examination of all sources, of all, of another set of samples and narrow down to areas, including carry out medical tests or collecting reports of medical examinations that have been done on kidney patients. And that is the area we are now. As soon as we have more, further information on this, we will let the council know. Okay, thank you very much.
Let Prof. add to what has been said.
Chairman, this is something that we have to be very careful with. Research normally requires composure, temperament and comportment. You have to be at least patient to get results. These kidney prone areas we're talking about, the institute has been working on it for four years. We had report from Jagawa about into this, then in Yobe. So we had to trace Yamari River, all the ternary there. Things being washed into the river, flowing all the way down. We took samples from the river, we took samples from shallow wells, we took samples from bowels and we took samples from plants. And we keep tracing them to see the pollution or the concentration of this as we move downstream, whether it was getting concentrated or less. Now, when this project is talking of, came from the But I want them, please don't jump into any conclusion. We have to be sure that we have the correct information to pass to the public. Before, we have more information than is being gathered anywhere. We have a lot of write-ups on this. But I have to confess to you, we do not just send information just because we are eager to show that we have done something. But we must be sure that this information going out is proper. So we have been following it. Then the Burnu on came, which is the end of the flow of that river, which doesn't even go as far as to that. Is it this pollution propagated on the surface as somebody may, through a geological process conducted?
Being represented by the Director, Water Supply.
Good afternoon, Permanent Secretary. I'm here to report the progress made on the implementation of the P-Wash program. So far, thirty-four states have signed the P-Wash protocol. Implementation has commenced in nineteen states. This Kanu, Ogun, Jagawa, Oshun, Ondo, Bauchi, Plato, Gombe, Kaduna, Zampara, Sokoto, Nasrawa, Ekati State, Cross River, Oyu, Quara, Imo, Delta and Karna State. The only exception are two states, Rivers and Bono State. These are the only two that do not sign the P-Wash protocol. Thank you.
Okay. So for the states, okay, you've told us the states for which implementation is ongoing. Okay, so comments? Yes, please?
Good afternoon, our protocol duly observed. In the case of Bono State, the documents recently reached our Honorable Commissioner and he was able to have endorsed the document. What remains is for His Excellency to endorse the document so that it would be compared to the Philharmonic of Water Resources. So because of the tight activities of the governor, the Commissioner was not able to get him and for him to endorse the document. That is the position of the document.
Okay, so we are hopeful?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you very much. River State? Any challenges to your signing the protocol? River State? Is that River State? Please give the microphone to him.
My name is Mr. Amir Bieka, the Permanent Secretary, Minister of Water Resources. We have forwarded the memorandum and the agreement to His Excellency. The letter has been sent to him. Before we left for this meeting, the Honorable Commissioner also visited. We believe that in the next couple of weeks, we will sign into the protocol. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm sure all the states know the huge benefits when they sign the P-Wash protocol. Thank you, Director of Water Supply. So quickly memorandum on sanitation and hygiene fund. The Director, Department of Water Quality Control, to report progress.
Thank you very much, ma'am. The Sanitation and Hygiene Fund is an offshoot of the Water Supply and Sanitation Collaborative Council, WSSCC. WSSCC. They are immediately they transformed from WSSCCs, WSSCC to Sanitation and Hygiene Fund, they had an issue, which is as a result of the global pandemic. The international NGO was relying more on donors. And unfortunately, the donations were not just coming in as expected. So as of this moment, we have been asked to still wait for further instruction from sanitation and hygiene. So we are still waiting for them until they respond. That is when we can conclude on the, our proposal the other time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments? Comments? We are happy with the report? Okay, thank you, Director. Okay, so I, I saw someone standing to stretch and I think that all of us need a little break. So I'm going to invite the Secretary to the technical committee, Mrs. Ojo Wu, to take us on a three-minute stretching exercise.
Thank you very much, ma'am. It's a very long day and we are old, old people now, not getting younger. Can we please, maybe we do a little exercise by standing up? And then we stretch our legs. I move your body. We're in the gym now. I wish the music is here for us to really check our bodies more. Stretch yourself, your hand up. Yes. The other one. Why don't you check your neck too? Yes. We are all wonderful people. And it's not good for us to really stay for a very long time sitting down. I want us to please, maybe we limit our discussion so that I'll be able to finish with these matters arising for us to really go into the business of the day. Because if you do the matters arising, we don't have memos, I don't think we'll be able to have a full, full council. So can we now maybe take, maybe move out of your seat a bit? Out, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine and ten. You're wonderful people. Clap for yourself. Clap for yourself. The hall is teefu.
Thank you very much.
See those business people. Water is life. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So the, so the secretary used the opportunity to ask us to please speed up. Did you notice that? Okay, so item number eleven. Oh, we've done that. Yes, we are now going to twelve. Memorandum on the village level operation and maintenance. And for that, we have the Department of Water Supply, represented by the Director, to provide an update.
Thank you, Permanent Secretary. On these twelve states so far have key in, these states are Rivers, Delta, Edu, Plato, Kaduna, Aqua Iwom, Quara, Niger and Gombe State. While the other states are still key in. This is the progress we made so far. Though we have challenges because of the COVID nineteen, we cannot do much. We can only do a few virtual meetings. Thank you.
Okay, so you heard the report. So by now, you should know whether you are of the twelve or of the twenty-four that have not keyed in. So please endeavor to key in so that we can ensure that the mandate to provide access to clean and safe water is to provide access to clean and safe water is achieved. Thank you very much, Director. You can go on to the next one. Just stay there. The next one is the memorandum on update of the National Wash Act... Am I correct? National Wash Action Plan.
Also on this one, thirty-four states have key in. On the... Yes, thirty-four states have signed the action plan. But implementation is still on a low level due to the same reason for the COVID-19. Thank you.
So the two remaining states, I'm sure you know yourselves. You need to key in. I see a hand at the far back microphone.
Yeah, good afternoon once again. My name is Hamid Nagugu from Federal Ministry of Youth and Sports. I'd like to say here that the Ministry of Youth and Sports would be relevant and would want to key into this. As basically the sensitization and advocacy on these clean water sanitization and hygiene falls within SDG Goal Six. It is very key here to have our youth who are... Who are trying to make the environment and especially water sustainable for, believing that most of us here have had and utilize our own share of water, on a lighter note, if I may say. We feel we can use the youth to disseminate the information and advocacy in our local communities because we find, we have an MDA, which is National Youth Service Corps, who are found everywhere in every community in the country. We can utilize them to pass on the message on this clean water and sanitation and hygiene, including open defecation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, our key stakeholder. I can inform you that we are already working with you, especially the NYSC. And I'm sure when we get to memo number sixteen, the Director of Water Quality can give us more on some of the things you have suggested. Thank you very much. So Director of Water Supply, thank you. And quickly, Director of Water Quality, I thought you'd be here already to save time. Director of Water Quality will report on the memo on the need to deregulate importation of water treatment chemicals in Nigeria. Water so... So maybe what we'll do, Water Quality, you take all your memos so that you have water supply. Don't keep on going up and down. So after that, just continue with all your memos. So memo on the need to deregulate importation of water treatment chemicals in Nigeria.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. The memo on the need to deregulate importation of water treatment chemicals in Nigeria was approved by the Council. And we tried to get reliable data. On this item, we needed to collate and get background information on the active manufacturers in Nigeria that are working or producing the water treatment chemicals, including alum, chlorine and lime. We have started the collation. We needed to get information on the total requirements of water treatment chemicals in Nigeria. And what is presently being imported and what is presently locally produced. We, I want to report that we have gotten enough record and update, we have updated our record on this. Then we have identified the active water treatment chemical producers or manufacturers in Nigeria. We have tried to organize a meeting with all the water treatment chemicals and we have actually gotten approval to do that. But unfortunately, I want to report that we ran into problem of funding because the vote of charge was not having enough fund as of that time. But now funds have been made available. So in the next one or two weeks, we are going to organize meeting with the water treatment chemicals as well as other stakeholders, including Raw Material Research and Development Council. And then we proceed from that place. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Any comments on this report? Yes, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Director. Mine is more of a comment in terms of collaboration. From what is written here on paper, you are talking about collaboration with Raw Material Research Council. I think you have expanded it more. Raw material, their raw material is from the Ministry of Mines. I think Ministry of Mines, there should be a need for a collaboration because the raw materials is in the Ministry of Mines, that's one. Secondly, it's an information in terms of the water treatment chemical. I could recall there is one professor, Bugaji, who is a chemical engineer, where he became a director of Federal Protection and Natural in the early 2000s. He drove up his staff from Ibadou-Belair University to Nasrawa, set up a treatment plant, a treatment chemical plant for alum and hydrated line. He went to, up to Palo Stitch, just moved to the next level, he was removed as director. I think people like that should be included or should be layers, that's two. Then there should be, there should layers more with a lot of research institutes that are relevant to this. Because a lot of universities today, they end up doing a lot of research on this and they end up on the shelf. So there's a need for you to collaborate with them instead of most of the universities setting up consulting services, then doing other things that are not, that cannot key to the development of this country. Not the raw material research where you are talking about the Kili Shef.
Thank you very much. I'd like to add for the Director that the the Secretariat of Clean Nigeria has a stand in the exhibition arena and we urge you all to visit that stand. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is American Niborg from Anambra State Ruasa. I am representing the General Manager, Anambra State Ruasa. It does an observation. From the remaining states that are yet to key in into Clean Nigeria Campaign, I see Anambra State there, whereas I know that in December twenty-twenty, His Excellency Chief Dr. Madhavati Obianor, our Executive Governor, declared Clean Nigeria Campaign in Anambra State. And also, one local government have declared open defecation for Anambra State, which is Anambra East Local Government. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think the record you have is as of last year.
As of last year.
I've just reported that all the states have keyed in, including Anambra.
Good afternoon once again. I'm Amin Muhammad Shama, the Director of Plan and Search and Statistics, Bono State Minister of Water Resources. Please, what is bothering us in my state is that we at the Ministry of Water Resources, we provide water. Then we have Ruasa, which is in wash activities proper. So when, when they talk of this open defecation, we don't know which part of the agency is supposed to have the mandate to control the open defecation. We have Busepa, that's Bono State Environmental Protection Agency, we have Ministry of Environment. So in my ministry, we don't have this unit that can take up the... But Ruasa is working hand in hand with UNICEF and other partners. So we are here to identify who is, who has the sole mandate to, for this open defecation in this state. This is the, this is the issue. So if the Federal Ministry of Water Resources can write a letter to the respected MDA, who can be saddled with this issue, then I think to be, the issue in my state will be addressed proper.
I want to believe that your case is an internal issue, what you can resolve within your state. But if you request the Ministry to write letter, obviously, we will respond to such a letter. Since you have Ruasa, and Ruasa have been working with UNICEF, they can continue with such an agency or revise as your governor choose to revise in your state. The other time, you mentioned the fact that somebody suggested that we should work with the youths. I want to report on that, that we have been working with the youths. Well, presently, we have a program called Youth Engagement Program. Where we recruited a hundred youths per local government to carry out such an assessment in the country. And I think the Permanent Secretary equally reported on that in her address this morning. The NYC, we have been discussing with NYC and we are still discussing to see, to work on the modalities of engaging NYC to carry out that assessment in all the local materials of the country.
So many hands. Okay, let's take the ones here and then we'll go to the back.
Thank you very much. I'm Suleiman Shabu from Adama State. I think the issue of open defecation is a collective responsibility by all. The line ministries or implementing ministries, including Ruasa, small towns where they exist, and even the urban water supply sector, need to be proactive because open defecation affects all the environment. So I think maybe the federal government will encourage the states to make sure that all, all hands are really on deck. Because it is my understanding that India used to be the country with the highest level of defecation. And that they have dropped down by up to forty percent through the construction of about one million dollars. So I think the, the problem, I think really is funding. In as much as we, we know that the public places, the motor parks, in the urban centers, there are no toilet facilities and things like that. Maybe all agencies of government actually need to make a budgetary provision and make sure that such facilities exist wherever they may be, so that we can holistically address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, give it to me. Let's restrict our comments to one, two minutes so that we can round up.
I'm Emmanuel Abana, Director of Dance Construction and Development, Ministry of Water Resources, Anambra State. My own is observation, the remaining states are said to be states that are key in.
I said all the states as of today have keyed in. There's no remaining state any longer.
Okay, okay. But these states, the remaining states here mentioned are said to be yet to key in.
No, that was as of last meeting.
Good evening, our protocol duly. My name once more is Mr. Akwawo. I represent the interests of hotel owners in Nigeria. I am the National Secretary. The issue of Clean Nigeria, I can remember not too long ago, I think about two years ago, we had a meeting with the Clean Nigeria Secretariat in Abuja. And we discussed a lot of things. One of the things we discussed was for us to see the possibility of the hotels extending their corporate social responsibility as far as open defecation is concerned. We had too many things. I even had to produce the minutes of the meeting. And I became, I was taken aback that after some time, we did not hear from the Clean Nigeria Secretariat. And I think that it's a lovable program. And if the Clean Nigeria Secretariat, the assets with our members that are spread all over the country, we can do so much. Especially, you know that hotels is one of the fastest growing sector in Nigeria, that there's nowhere you go to in this country without seeing a good hotel. I think this is supposed to be a wake-up call to Clean Nigeria Secretariat to see how we can partner with them, especially in extending our corporate social responsibility. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for the commitment you've just made here. But I think we have been discussing with your group. And the first request we made to you is that you leave your toilet open to passersby. If somebody is pressed and just have to use your toilet without staying in your room, it is your responsibility to allow them. And since you have all these hotels all over, if anybody is pressed anywhere in Nigeria and you have a nearby hotel, this man has just made a commitment that you can go in and use the toilet. But yeah, it's the same thing with petrol station. If any petrol station is open and they have toilet and you are pressed, you are walking along that line, please make use of such facilities. They don't have the right to stop you.
Hello? Can I make my suggestion? Please stand on existing protocol.
Okay. Microphone this way, please. Is there someone who wants to speak there?
Yes, ma'am.
No, further?
I'm already standing, ma'am.
Oh, yes, please go on.
Standing on existing protocol, I am Engineer Francis Ume Mezir, the representative of Africa Water Association. On your comment concerning the state that is having conflict between Ruasa and the urban as the process of the governor's understanding of it. I want to say that asking them to stay that way is not the best. I think there is one tension to a critical issue. Urban sanitation is urban sanitation and rural sanitation is rural sanitation. I think there is need for the governor and the commissioner or the permanent secretary to be well informed. And if they understand better, and some other states that are going through sanitation and to include. And so there is need to have the, the urban sanitation where, in every... So there should be a courage to carry out their reform and have the urban sanitation. Thank you.
For correction, I have not said they should remain at the status quo. I said it is their internal matter that has to be resolved internally. And I said if they require the support of Federal Ministry of Water Resources, they should let us know, depending on the situation in their state. But it is the responsibility of the executive governor to do the structure of the state as he pleases.
Okay, thank you very much. You wanted to say something, sir?
Please, I'm beginning with the ministry. Do you know how
Do you know how Ruasa was coined? It's from rural water sanitation, so it's not Ruasa. It's Ruasam, there is an "s" at the end. The Japanese can say "ts" I know. But please don't say Ruasa, it doesn't come from. It's Ruasam, rural, aru, water, W A T, and then sanitation, S A N, Ruasam.
Maybe with time, the name has been adjusted to Ruasa.
Your time is right now, begin here.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. So if you go back to the old days, Ruasam.
Ruasam.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I never knew that. Thank you, sir. I've been calling it Ruasa. And I know many of us here have also been saying that.
I think they have amended it slightly at the point to call it Ruasa. And that is why we are using Ruasa. But in those days, it used to be Ruasam.
Ruasam.
Okay.
Thank you. So are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Director of Water Quality. For your last memo is a memo on twenty nineteen Rivers and Open Water Bodies Monitoring Activities Outlook. Was Director of Water Supply, please get ready. You have two memos left.
Okay, the memo column, the on those to updating of the National Water Quality Reference Laboratories in accordance with ISO seventeen oh two five. We have virtually done that. We have trained and built the capacities of all the laboratories with respect to ISO seventeen oh two five. And we encourage states that have laboratories to equally do that for their own laboratories. Our laboratories are set to go in for accreditation with respect to this ISO seventeen oh two five, which we start, we soon start doing. We have procured enough equipment and reagents to continue with monitoring of water bodies, especially open water bodies as well as groundwater bodies. We are doing that regularly. The other one is on open defecation, which I think we have spoken about that. Thank you very much, ma'am. Am I to repeat?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't see any hand. Oh, I see one hand. Okay, microphone.
It's a question to Director of Water Quality. I'm aware that people are consulting laboratory at Kasaba. I don't know what is the state of that laboratory because you are talking about equipping the laboratories. And I look at that laboratory as an abandoned laboratory. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Can I ask you the last time you were in that laboratory?
I passed through there every day. I know at Okpamam, I know the place. Thank you.
No, you are not...
Sorry, that's not the answer to the question.
I passed through there. It's on that key unlock.
Excuse me.
When last did you pass through?
As I passed through there last week. It's on that key unlock, sir.
But is it not completed?
It's not yet completed. There's no activities there.
No, wait, wait. And wait, I have not reported here that we are equipping the laboratory in Asaba. I have never said that. I don't know where you hear that.
No, I'm asking the question. I'm only trying to draw your attention to it.
Okay.
Director of Water Quality, please respond.
Okay, actually, the contractor has not handed over. The contractor is still working. The laboratory is about ninety percent completion as of today. So, it has not been handed over. Until the construction is done and completed, we cannot equip any laboratory. It is after that that we can then discuss about equipping and providing the staff for that laboratory.
Thank you. I see a hand. Yes.
Also standing on existing protocols, I'm Engineer from Sivanos from River State Ministry of Water and Rural Development. Issue for action in this memo is needs to update National Water Quality Reference Laboratories in accordance with ISO seventeen oh two five. I also know that there's a laboratory in River State. And River State is also one of the victims of these open water bodies. Like, we all know that River State will have this what we call a suit that's on daily basis. Even up to now, if you see a water, rainwater from River State, it's as black as charcoal. So the question now is, what's the update on this laboratory in River State by Federal Ministry of Water Resources? Like, we want to know the update issue because it will help us in knowing the challenges we have in these open body waters.
Yeah, thank you very much. We have started the construction of the laboratory in Potacot. Unfortunately, while the contractor was there, he detected a number of bombs that were not exploded. So presently, we have contacted the security agencies to ensure they detonate all the active bombs on that site. Until that is done, the contractor may not be able to return back to that site. So, and the ministry is working with the security agencies to do that. So that is the present situation. But before then, before the discovery or before this action was taken, the lab has gotten to about fifty percent completion.
Thank you very much. Okay, I had said that would be the last, but we can take you. We can accommodate you one minute, please.
My name is Namali Joseph. I'm representing a do state. I want to find out from you. Is the laboratory made for all states or only selected states? Because recently, we have applied to the state governor to build a laboratory. So I want to know whether a do state is included with other states that already have, that have been approved for laboratory. So I would now know how to take this step further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The National Council for Water Resources approved two laboratories per geopolitical zone. So, and for South South, we have them located in Asaba and Potacot. Okay, so the one in Asaba is expected to cover a do state? Yeah.
Thank you very much, Director of Water Quality. Water Supply, you have two memos. The first one is memo is matter number fifteen, memorandum on the completion status of original abandoned urban water supply project.
Thank you very much. From twenty sixteen, after the technical audit, four twenty number projects were identified as either abandoned or ongoing. Out of these four twenty number projects, sixteen are completed. About fourteen are ongoing, while about twelve are going to be closed because they are not viable. This is the report on item number fifteen. Then item number eighteen is on the wash norm. The wash norm has been completed. All the survey has been completed. We have done the report writing. We have agreed with all the stakeholders. And the day show workshop will be held around January. And then the report will be ready during the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. This is the update on the wash norm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any reports from any of the states on this? Yes.
Thank you. I rely on the existing protocol. I'm Mr. Kalyo, Permanent Secretary, Water Resources, River State Ministry. I am going to talk about memo fifteen. That is regional water schemes. There has been reported that some are ongoing, some have been completed, and some are going to be abandoned. I want us to know... I want to know the status of the Otamere Water Scheme in River State. Is it among the abandoned or the one that is ongoing? Because since the project was awarded some years ago, it has not advanced more than paying paying the initial contract fee, which has not gone anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Otamere Water Supply has been transferred back to River State for completion. There was a technical committee that was set up between the ministry and the state government to examine that and then transfer back the project for completion to River State. Because River State are going to have some support from the World Bank and African Development Bank. So that should be packaged under the states to complete. Thank you.
We'll take the last question or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please, I'm from Ekiti State, the General Manager of the State Rural Water Supply and Sanitation Agency. I would love to have liked it to have given us a list of the ongoing projects, ongoing dam projects. Because in Ekiti, we are very eager to know the status of Ogbe Se Dam.
Water Supply project, please.
Water Supply, not dams.
The dam, the dam.
You want the dams?
The dam.
Okay, he's talking about water supply.
Okay.
So maybe you need to meet with the Director Dams
All right.
after now. Thank you. I see a hand at the very end.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gloria Akor. I'm the Institutional Strengthening and Support Specialist on the Potacot Water Project that is being managed by Potacot Water Corporation. The person who gave the last report said that the Otamere Water Scheme has been transferred to River State Government because of the support we have from World Bank and African Development Bank. The support we have from World Bank and African Development Bank is for two local governments alone, which is Potacot Local Government and Obia Po Local Government. It has nothing to do with Otamere Water Scheme. So I don't know, and I don't know from which letter at what point the Otamere Water Scheme was being transferred to River State. I think the ministry and correct effectively. Thank you.
Maybe you don't have the records, but we have the records in our files. You will see from the day that we wrote to the governor for him to constitute a technical committee that work with our own committee for the transfer of the project back to River State for completion. If you want details, you can meet with us.
Okay, I think we need to move on. We need to move on because the technical subcommittees are yet to meet. They are going to meet after now. I would like to advise that all the representatives from the states, you have access to the directors. After this session, you can still meet them and interact further. Thank you very much. So Director of Water Supply, for the last item, item number eighteen, memorandum on national outcome routine mapping, wash norm two. Thank you.
I also reported on that. I made mention that the survey has been completed. We have recently, last two weeks, we have a workshop where we discuss the results. And the draft report is now ready. The validation is going to take place in January. And then the report, the final report will be out during the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so that brings us to the end of the matters arising. I think we need to give ourselves a warm round of applause. And so quickly, we move on to my closing remarks and some announcements. Okay, so... So I want to use this opportunity to thank each and every one of us once again for your inputs in the deliberations we have just concluded. I appreciate your commitment. I appreciate your time and all that we have deliberated upon in a very professional manner. I would like to inform us that as we break now for lunch, that immediately after lunch, the technical subcommittees are expected to meet to consider, review, evaluate, and fine-tune all the memos that we have received. I've had the privilege to scan through some of the memos. And I want to believe that some memos may not actually be for this council. Why do I say that? And in saying this, I'm also urging the technical subcommittees to take a very close look at the memos. We must remember that this council has a particular theme. And the memos are to be aligned to the theme. The essence is that we use this council meeting, this technical committee meeting, to deal with all emerging financial and management issues, militating against sustainable infrastructure in the water sector. If we are not careful, we will go outside the theme and we will not achieve the desired result for this council meeting. So I urge us to bear in mind the theme and to also go into details to distinguish between information memos and action memos. If the memos come back well-considered, well-written, you will see that our next session will flow seamlessly. Now, I have a very important announcement also to make. And that is to say that we will continue with the technical committee meeting tomorrow. But after the technical committee meeting, we are going to have a period of some days before the main council meeting. Ordinarily, council meeting is to hold this Thursday. But due to circumstances beyond our control, the council meeting will now hold next week Tuesday, which is the twenty-first of December twenty twenty-one. I want to straight away regret every inconvenience this may cause. I want to straight away regret every inconvenience this may cause and to let you know that the decision to postpone the date of the council meeting has a reason because the Honorable Minister is away on other pressing state assignment. And so I would like to crave your indulgence. All the participants from the states, all our stakeholders, all our directors, our advisory council members, to say that after we meet today and tomorrow, the main council meeting will take place on the twenty-first of December twenty twenty-one. We apologize for every inconvenience. But we look forward to having the same full house and even more robust deliberations. I see a hand up. I don't know, is it to ask a question?
Make a proposal.
To make a proposal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's hear you.
Now. We've been, okay, I am Professor Henry Badu from Amo Di Ber. I see that it is already by my watch, if I'm right. This is after four to five. Since the council meeting is not going to hold on Thursday, then can we relax and use tomorrow and the next day consider all the memos so that we can even refresh? Because wanting to get the memos done is because we want them presented on Thursday. So we could as well just close today, go and give ourselves a rest. Some of us even traveled in today. Do tomorrow and Wednesday, and then we have enough time. This is
Okay, I saw another hand. Yes, sir. Let's hear you.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Williams Abba, Director of Water Resources, Gombe State. I align myself with the submission made by my learned professor. Thank you, Prop. I support his motion. Thank you.
Yes, I see another hand. If you, please, we have a proposal and we have a supporter. Only raise your hand if you are opposing the proposal. Yes, I see a hand here. Microphone.
My name is Engineer Yemina, Biaosa State. I am against this proposal because that will extend our stay here by an extra one day, which will make us spend extra money. I'm coming. He said Tuesdays and Wednesdays. But what is on ground is today and tomorrow. So if we extend it to Wednesday, it's going to make some of us stay here for an extra one day, which I think will cost a lot of us some money. So I will propose that we go back to what Madame proposed initially. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone seconding this proposal? Any seconda? Yes, sir. Microphone.
Well. The Chairman and Technical Council. My name is Doctor Ife Miku from Biaosa State, Director of PRS. I want to second the motion that we do our technical committee sessions for Tuesday and break until next week, Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay. That hand, are you for or against, or you have a new proposal?
Just an observation, observation.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Chair and the table. I discovered that the state, the persons that are opposed and and support the opposition, both of them of same state, which shouldn't stand. Both of them, yes, sir. So let's have any other state that will, because, ma, for us, for me, particularly in Delta, you're, it's costing me so much already. Your first memo, your letter to us here, Sokoto, we have booked our tickets for Sokoto. We had, because of the that has been given to us now, which we have equally bought our tickets and hotels paid for, which I know there will be no refund, then to ask me go again and come back. I mean, let's be human and think about it. My debt will not pay and fund my coming back again. So I believe, just as has been proposed, let's leave it till Wednesday, so we can leave Thursday, forgetting that I've already paid for my Friday night. I won't mind that.
Sorry, I think you are contradicting yourself.
No, I'm not, ma. I am standing by the already
Let me explain what I said.
Okay, ma.
I said, all I have, in fact, I don't know why a proposal came up, strictly speaking. Because all I have said is that the main council for which the Honorable Commissioners are members, who are not here, will hold next week Tuesday.
Yes, ma'am.
This technical committee for which we are here is holding a shadow.
It's okay. Thank you, ma.
So I see, sorry, let me finish. I see that some participants who have traveled to Abuja, what they are saying is that they want to spend extra time here. Please, you are welcome. Have a holiday. But this meeting is for today and tomorrow, and it remains so. Because I don't think we are here to now extend the time of the meeting. All it means that the sub-technical committees will work longer. So maybe if you were to go to bed at twelve, you will now have to go to bed at two A.M. That's what it means. But the shadow, the program, remains as it is. Thank you very much. Madam, what do you want to say again?
Good evening, Chairman. I'm Mrs. Nenahugo from Imo State Ministry of Water Resources. I am the Permanent Secretary, covering the duties of the Honorable Commissioner. I was giving approval for this meeting from twelfth to seventeenth. So I don't know my fate for next week because I don't know how to reapply. Why here? And if I go back, my coming back, I cannot assure you. Thank you, ma.
My dear sister, we'll miss you if you don't come back. Please try and come back. But if you need, if we need to assist you in any way, maybe in the form of a letter, we will gladly do so. Thank you. Lagos State.
Good afternoon, ma. Your proposal is quite accepted. But I would ask, can it be, can the council meeting be attended online? Virtually?
Yes, even for this meeting, I think we are, we are live streaming, yes. So, yes.
Okay, ma.
But I would like, would like for your Commissioner to be here in person.
The Honorable Commissioner has delegated me to attend on his behalf.
And so come back.
And he has given me only the approval for Monday till Friday, which I have to go back.
We can give you a letter. We are really very, very sorry. But like I said, the Honorable Minister has an assignment which just could not wait.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so on that note, I'd like to thank us all. I don't know if the Secretary has any announcements. No announcements. You need to let us know how we are having lunch and then when the sub-technical committees are to meet and when they are to submit their memorandum. So Secretary, please.
Thank you very much for your patience. We are supposed to break for lunch. The announcement for the lunch is as follows. The holding room, which the OSHA's with direct, our EDA statement, they will have their lunch there. Directors, managing directors, executive directors, permanent secretaries, deputy directors, assistant directors, they will have their food in this hall here. Then other stakeholders, we have so many serving points outside. Thereafter, we have to go into the business of the day, which is the technical subcommittee meetings. They, we have six groups. The one group, that is Water Supply, which is the largest committee, has, is holding inside the main hotel. And this hall, we have four that will be holding in this place. Is it four? Yeah, four. And the fifth one, the sixth. Two by this side, two by the other side, one at the center. That's how we have grouped this. That is five here and one outside. I can see the faces not looking too happy because this session has taken us to five o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. Reason is due to logistic arrangements. We are sorry. And also, if we have these matters arising before now, I don't think we keep ourselves to this moment. I'm appealing to all of us to please try as much as possible when you see our request, answer, attend to those requests. We had had all this and you have given us what you have done. You just come and maybe have a review of what you have done for clarity. They will not spend three hours to stay here. And now, I think six o'clock will be fine for us to resume for our technical session, if you don't mind. As the Permanent Secretary has spoken, the agenda for technical sessions still stands, that is Monday and Tuesday. So let us do as much as possible, even though as at now, we have about forty-nine memos that have been given to us, but I know some of them are just requests. And let me use this opportunity that, by the grace of God, after this meeting, the twenty-eighth session, there's need for us to have stakeholders meeting so that especially the requests or memos from the state, we will educate you on how you can come up with a memo that will be acceptable so that we'll be able to also collaborate with all our stakeholders. Because there are some of the memos I have seen that are just supposed to be requested to the Ministry for intervention, but not as council memos. That is just the raw papers, I mean, memos I have received. If you can help us, and by the grace of God, I think we have to have a meeting so that we can educate ourselves how to come up with council memos that can be accepted at our National Council on Water Resources. So by tomorrow, agenda, you are supposed to give us your memos, that is secreted, by one thirty to two thirty P.M., to two. That is what it is on the agenda. And I want to appeal to Mama, if she can maybe review that time and give us one extra hour. This is an appeal. Instead of coming back by four o'clock, we'll come back by five o'clock, if you don't mind. Please. Please. Yes.
I think we shouldn't preempt ourselves. Let's see how it goes because we don't know how many memos will finally emerge. Because if we save five and we are ready before five, then there's a problem.
Okay.
So I think we can still save four and then we see how it goes. If there's a need to shift it, we should have a mechanism to be able to send information.
It's okay. Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you, ma.
Thank you.
So on this note, can I say thank you very much and I wish you a good, bon appétit. Anybody that doesn't have food to eat, draw me, draw my attention. Everybody will be fed. My Permanent Secretary is here and she is making that provision. I learned there were a lot of lapses in the morning. We have overflow, but it's the love, love for water. Water is very key. So can I say, good afternoon, everybody? I think enjoy your lunch. Or can I say semi-dinner? Okay, eh? Okay.
Sorry, please, just one announcement before you step out of the hall.